It's 5:04. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of September the 23rd. Councilmember Whitaker is excused and absent. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the items on the agenda for tonight's regular council meeting. So, council, please refer to that. I know we looked at it on Thursday, answered a few questions that you might have had. Had a great presentation on Item 4J, the recycling, also the Northeast Public Safety Facility, Item 5C. Also talked about 6B, the scooter ordinance. So, as it sits right now, we have nothing off the consent agenda. Any additional questions you have about anything on the agenda tonight before we go upstairs?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Brady, on 6B, the scooter, what was the decision? I was listening in, but yet I think you were going to, we were going to approve certain components of it.
I'll have to see if you can explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, Mayor and council member, we've decided to push back the effective date of the ordinance, and so that'll give us additional time to do the notice necessary to do the fee increase and comply with the 60-day Notice Statute. And so, the ordinance is going to be introduced tonight, then we'll approve it at the next council meeting. The effective date will have a delayed date, and then we'll, in that interim, we'll come back to you with the terms and conditions with a resolution, and then that effective date, then we'll marry up with the effective date of the ordinance.
All right.
And just to be clear, too, I think that, I'm assuming you heard, we're taking the recommendation to move that fee from $100 to $400 per application.
Correct.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So, make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Luna.
Consent on 7C-19, I'm just very pleased that we're going to have a hotel in District 5 over at the Longbow area, so that's going to be very exciting with approval of councils. So, I just wanted to mention that. It's a very exciting development for the City of Mesa, and that's very, very exciting.
Yeah, I think everyone has really enjoyed seeing the development along Longbow Parkway with the Sprouts and the Fat Cats, and now have a, had a hotel out there is, you're right, I agree, it's a lot of fun to see that development. Okay, council, any other questions about tonight's agenda? If not, the next item on our agenda for this meeting is Item 2, that's to hear a presentation and discuss an update on the city's utility assistance program. Ed Tweedens, Tommy Cable, and Eva Felix, I believe, are with us today. Welcome.
Tommy is our credit services supervisor, and Eva is from A New Leaf Mesa Can.
Great.
So, with all the conversations going on about electric turnoffs and other conversations about customers being able to pay their bills across the valley, we decided it might be a good time to come, talk to the council, and give you an update on our assistance programs. So, just as some background and order of magnitude, we bill about $182,000 utility accounts each month. Each of those utility accounts has between one and five services, depending on where they are in the city and what utility services we provide in that area. Our utility billing cycle, the first bill is issued about 30 days after an account is turned on, and that is due about 21 days after that. The bill is delinquent that next day. A few days after that, the second cycle is completed, and they receive the bill for the second cycle, and at the top of that bill, it's got a red banner on it, it's marked "delinquent," and it asks the customer to pay the past due amount so that they don't get turned off at some future date. Few days after that, we do mail out a delinquency disconnect letter based on that Bill 1 that might still or still unpaid at that point. At Day 71, they get a robocall from us, saying that they are eligible for disconnect, and it's going to be going out into the field to be worked. And on that Day 72, that's when it goes out to the field crews to actually put on their schedule to do a collection turnoff. We work those generally, about 90-some percent of that, within one to five days. Depends on what's going on in the city, how the calendar lays out, where we are in the week, that type of thing, but most of those are worked within five days. So, you can see that our, from the time that a customer starts receiving service from us to the time we actually turn them off, we're at 72 days or more, depending on how that schedule works out for the collection off. We do not do any delinquent turnoffs for an account balance that's less than $50. In a given month, we do issue about 14,500 delinquent disconnect letters, so you can see that quite a few of our customers find themselves in a place where they are delinquent. But more than 96% of those actually make a payment arrangement or make a payment before we actually get to the point of considering them for a disconnect. Most months, we turn off about 1,000 services, which, in a quick calculation, works out to about 450 accounts. And our past experience is about 2/3 of those turn their services back on, either same day or next day, and the other third just kind of either go away or they reconnect at a later date. We do offer some utility assistance. First one is a payment arrangement. Customer that qualifies can get up to six payment arrangements per year. That is if, you know, they have a, something going on where they don't have the money today, but they might a week from now, and we will make an arrangement with them to make that late payment. They can enter into our selected due date program, so if a person gets paid or gets a social security check or something at a certain time of the month, and they want to schedule with us a different day, due date than our customer information system schedules, we can put them on that plan. And we also have a budget billing program. Generally, the time to enter that program is in October, and that way, the customer has time to build up the account balance before we get into the higher-usage water and electric months in the summer. We do make some exceptions to that if the customer works with us, but generally, that program is made available and advertised to start in October. We're very happy to have a Mesa Utility Assistance Program. This is $100,000 annually that the city budgets, and it is administered by A New Leaf, the Salvation Army, and Lutheran Social Services. They do use their existing guidelines to determine who's eligible for the program. Generally, that's the LIHEP worksheet, and the agencies provide us notice that a customer has qualified and what they, how much they qualify for, and we apply that to the customer's account. We don't give the agencies a check, and we don't play around with checks back and forth. They notify us, and then we just do an internal transfer to the customer's account. In 2018, we were able to help 265 customers with this $100,000 for an average assistance amount of $379. It says that we used that over an 11-month period in 1819. It was actually 10 months. There was one award that just happened to sneak in in June with some additional funds that were left over. But as you look at the comparison, that money last year actually lasted longer. We were able to have funding available to customers longer last year than we had in previous years. I will note that this year so far, we are a little above where we normally are. As you can see, just in a month and a half, we've got 21, over $21,000 out with customers. We also have through our Energy Resources Department what's called the Mesa Summer Electric Assistance Program, SEA. It's for residential customers in Mesa's electric utility area. It is income-qualified at $27,000. The assistance is up to $15.85 on the July, August, and September bills, or for a total of $47.55 if they do all three months. We have about 191 customers on that at this point. It's a little bit less than last year. We do have other resources available. We have some great partners out in the community that we're very pleased with. Cara is in Pinal County, so it's basically for our Magma customers, our gas customers out in Pinal County. We do have some great assistance from our faith-based organizations. Queen of Peace and St. Vincent de Paul are on our list that we hand to customers, but there are other faith-based organizations that are able to help, too, and we really appreciate that. Lutheran Social Services, Salvation Army are both partners with us, along with A New Leaf, on the Mesa Utility Assistance Program, but they also have other sources of funding available that they work as well. And then, you know, A New Leaf also provides other services, wraparound services, that help our customers, which we think, you know, is a great benefit to our customers, too. We're very sad when we have a customer on the phone and we can't help them and we have to turn off their services, but it's really great when we get them connected with A New Leaf, and they're able to provide not just some assistance if they qualify, if the customer qualifies, but also those wraparound services that help the customer overall. I do have Eva Felix here from A New Leaf, and I'd like to give her just a few minutes to say a few words and answer any questions that you might have.
So, good afternoon. My name's Eva Felix. I'm the Director of Community Services. We've had this partnership with the City of Mesa for several years. If I may say, we couldn't help our customers with all of their services if it wasn't for this partnership. The City of Mesa funds that we do receive puts us in a very unique situation where our City of Mesa clients not only have utility issues, but tied to that bill is the water, sewer, and trash. This funding allows us to pay for that. When they come to Mesa Can, we don't, we don't split it up. Here's their total bill, so it allows us, with those funds, to be able to cover the entire bill, which is, again, a unique predicament for them to be in, but for us to be able to assist with. Should that client continue to be in crisis three, six months later, we do have some additional funds to assist, LIHEP and supplemental, to tie them over to the following year. But if it wasn't for these City of Mesa funds, the full bill wouldn't be able to be paid when they're delinquent. So, and it is because of this partnership, so thank you for that.
Yes, Mr. Luna.
Eva, do you, I'm sorry, it's good to see you, Eva.
Good to see you.
Eva and I used to do a lot of work together. Eva, do you work with SRP as well? Do they provide funds for utility assistance?
We do. We partner also with SRP, Southwest Gas. And again, that bundling of services allows us to also provide them some additional support services. Let's say they need a food box, we have that. They need to get their kids immunized, that's in-house. My kid doesn't have a GED, we have that in-house, thanks to that partnership with the City of Mesa. Those wraparound services, literally making Mesa Can a one-stop shop. Come here, get your bus pass, get your kids immunized, allow us to help you with that utility bill, allow us to help you with that rental bill. I don't know how I'm going to pay for my kid's college education, we have that in-house. Again, a bundling of support services all under one roof, allowing our clients, that single mom with ball tires, little gas, come into one place and allow us to provide you that unique one-stop-shop component. Again, partnering with SRP, Southwest Gas, City of Mesa, and the LIHEP, and of course, through the federal government, the Community Service Block Grant.
Mr. Thompson.
I was going to say, I think the biggest hindrance to our community is that they don't know this is available. And, you know, I had a, it wasn't my constituent, it was someone from another district reached out on Facebook and asked for assistance, and I immediately reached out to Eva, and I reached out to Mark Young, and between the two of them, they were able to assist this constituent, and they had just, simply just fell on hard times, the retirees, fixed They, I guess the spouse, his wife, had gotten sick and had to, had to be admitted into a hospital, and the hospital bills all of a sudden piled up, and he had to choose between paying for his wife's health in the hospital and paying his electric bill and his mortgage. And, you know, and he had paid his hospital bills so his wife could get well, and in doing so depleted their bank account. And so, he was asking for assistance, and so, we were able to connect Mesa United Way and Mesa Can together, and they helped the gentleman because he was simply just needed to get back on his feet for one month until his next checks came in, and they could, and they could be sustainable after that. But, you know, a great, great opportunity. I just think it's something that not a lot of folks in our community know about, and I wish they did, because it's certainly available for those that are falling on hard times that, that need that hand, that hand up versus the handout.
Thank you. Jen.
I have quite a few questions, just so that I can better understand, since I'm really on the side of trying to understand the program. So, if you can have a little patience with me and, and guide me, like, okay, I'm having problems paying my utility bill. Would I then contact the city or one of our nonprofits? How does this work?
So, generally, we suggest they contact us first so that we know that there's something going on with that account, and then we can guide them to some assistance, and I think Tommy can.
Let me try to explain what happens when they're calling.
When a customer calls and reaches out to us, we offer payment arrangements to allow them time to get assistance. We do not allow the accounts to go into three-month bills because it hinders their ability to catch up. We meet a lot of resistance at first with customers, not wanting to reach out to the organizations, because they look at it as a handout instead of the handup. We encourage them, we'll make a payment arrangement. Some customers, we will reach out to Mesa Can directly and say, you know, they're homebound, their services are due to be turned off tomorrow, there's not a lot we can do, can you help us? And they will, they'll do home visits if they need to, they contact the customers, and we work together. Accounts, like Ed was saying, they're almost two-and-a-half-month, three-month bill before we even get to the point of disconnection. So, the sooner they reach out to us, it's easier for us to communicate with them. But we try to make it a habit to encourage them to get assistance.
So, at the 60-day mark, or I have to go back to that slide, around the 60-day, I mean, there is a delinquency. So, if it's email, it comes through, like, an email notice, delinquency?
Email, text.
As well as paper?
Yep.
Okay, paper model. And then, someone says, okay, I do need assistance. Do you feel there is enough time between the 60 to 72 days or whatever to get them income-qualified, to get the assistance back and get it arranged with the city? Is that pretty efficient, or does it?
It is pretty efficient, depending on when they contact us. We have customers that will wait until the day of disconnect to contact us. That makes it a little bit more difficult, but if they're reaching out to us as soon as they get that letter, we can put their account into, on a payment arrangement and give them the time that they need.
Okay. So, let's say they don't get the assistance and their utilities are disconnected. I assume there's a reconnect fee?
Yes, sir.
What is that for residential? I know.
For a residential water account, for a next-day reconnection is $19 plus tax. Plus, they are charged for the disconnection, which is $11 plus tax. Depending on if we have a deposit on the account, they may be required to pay a deposit or an increased deposit if they've had their services disconnected more than twice.
So, the deposit isn't used at any point to?
Not, not while the account remains active.
Okay, okay. Do we offer, in the city, I guess, any utility audits or anything like that, where we can go to people's homes who are struggling with the cost of their utilities, to maybe give them some tips or help them out, or maybe we, through our neighborhood outreach, have some assistance in replacing a window or lights, or whatever it is that might be the culprit?
Yes, we do, we do, our field crews do go out and do audits of different things. They'll look around for water leaks, they'll check the water meter to see if it's defective, they will see if, they'll turn all the services off, check the meter to see if anything's still flowing through the meter that would indicate a leak, perhaps under the house or something that's not visible. We do have, you've had presentations from the Community Services, so there are some programs that they make available to residents. So, there are different things that can be done, and we can assist the customer.
And we do try to troubleshoot with the customer over the phone, too.
Right there.
Because a lot of times.
Costs are.
It's something that they can find pretty quickly on their own. They might notice a darker green patch of grass where weeds are growing.
Right.
And typically, that'll end up being a landscape leak or something like that, so.
Okay. And what do you think the demand is versus how many people are serviced? Do we serve as many people as needed, or is there the demand even, you know, the dollars we have available versus the need?
I think the funding is available, and I think right now, it's getting people to be open to seeking assistance. You know, like Mr. Thompson was saying, it's a matter of letting customers know that these are available to them.
Do we provide any of that information when we do the letter or the notice that if you?
We provide it in our conversations with customers. We let them know where they can reach out for assistance. I personally think that if we could do some town halls or something to bring the community, we can have some of the agencies available to let them know how they can seek assistance would be great.
I was just wondering, on the delinquency notice, can you say, we do have assistance for those who qualify, you know?
It's been a while since I've looked at that letter.
Or something like that.
It's a great suggestion.
You could look at that letter, the first letter.
And then let them know, maybe where.
It's a great idea.
Nonprofits are, so that if they say, you know, I am income-challenged, so maybe I would qualify.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that letter in a while, but that's certainly something we can review.
It's not on there right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, council, if we, we're going to continue, we actually are proposing some additional assistance under this program, too. Though I think, we hope it'll improve even where we are today. But we'll answer any questions now, but I just wanted to suggest that we are, this is, we're giving you kind of the status quo, but we also have a list of recommendations going forward. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
I do have a question. You mentioned something about a town hall and reaching out to constituents in their respective districts. Is there some geographical areas that are more higher use than others that we could coordinate with? Would that be fair to ask? And if, if so, I mean, if they're in my district or, you know, whatever districts they are, we could provide a little bit more help for you and reach out?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, what we could do is go run a, we could go run a scattergram of seeing where we provided that assistance, then we could get back and show you.
Like a heat map.
Yeah, heat map. Heat map, scattergram, whatever. And so, that would help, maybe that would help us to answer your question, then we could, that would help us know where we could really target that message.
Okay, I have one last question. On Slide 5, Ed, you were talking about the budget billing program, and can you kind of redefine that for me? Explain that again.
Budget billing plan?
With budget billing, we take their average bill for the year, and then they'll make the average payment, and then they have a settlement program, or settlement time in September. And so, what we try to do is make it so it's a flat payment throughout the year, and then if they, at the end of the year, they either have to settle it and pay more, or we'll know next year their budget payments will go lower if they're.
SRP does this similar program. It's like a balanced billing program, I'm not sure what the right term is.
I thought you mentioned something about when you could qualify for it, or?
Oh, no, it's. Generally, the program opens in October for the next year, and that allows the customer to build up that balance so that it covers their warmer months.
That's what I was curious about, because if a person came in midstream and wanted to qualify for the program, could they do that? Or is it?
We do, we do it on an exception basis.
It's easier to start in October so that they have the months where they're paying probably a little bit more than their actual usage, so when you get into the hot months, then it, it matches up.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And I know Mr. Brady mentioned that we're anticipating, or staff is looking at it perhaps increasing the funding for this program.
Give us one more slide, Mayor, and we'll be there.
Great, I'll bite my tongue until the end of the presentation. Thank you.
So, this year, with all the conversations with APS and their electric turnoffs, we did implement a pilot program to suspend electric disconnects from that point. I say June 1st here, but I think it was sometime later in June through the end of September this year. Currently, there are about 170 accounts that are unpaid because we have suspended this, the turnoffs, and their average balance is about $555. They will be eligible for turnoffs starting on October 1st. Notices went out to these folks on, I believe it was September 12th or so, asking them to give us a call, set up a payment arrangement, or to make payment before we get to that potential turnoff date in October. You know, this is one of those things, too, that we're very cautious of. We don't want to make their plight worse by aggregating a whole bunch of deferred payments. So, it's kind of a balance. We need to get into the next couple of months to see how this plays out, as SRP, or APS, rather, is watching, too. The news stories the last couple of weeks have changed to stories about these, you know, how much these customers have ahead of them now to pay before they're eligible for turnoff, and we want to be conscious of that as well. So, we'll be watching and continuing this dialogue.
Mr. Thompson.
Quick question on, why, why, or how did you pick June 1st and September 30th? Just out of curiosity, because usually it starts warming up in May, and the temperature usually doesn't break until Halloween-ish timeframe, and it cools off, and I'm just thinking more towards the elderly person that may be having difficulties paying their electric bill, that if we shut it off, shut their power off in September, it's still 98 degrees in October. And inside an apartment, or inside a mobile home, or inside a house, it's probably pushing the 85, 88, which is pretty warm for an elderly person or something of that. So, I'm just trying to figure out what the threshold is.
Mayor, Councilman Thompson, really, we started this program when many of the other utilities in the valley were, there was a lot of attention on some of the unfortunate deaths that might, that were taking place. And so, about the same time they were also suspending their cutoffs, we also responded during that same period of time. We haven't had that same, we, as Ed said, we have a really good rate of paying up after their power's disconnected, but we wanted to kind of mirror what everybody else, and so that's where these days came from. We kind of tried to follow kind of the trend that everybody else was following.
So, we're mirroring SRP and APS.
As much as we could, I think we may be a week or two off.
I think APS is going to October 15th, but it's, it's right now.
Well, and that's what I was thinking, if we went mid-May to mid-October, I mean, if your average outstanding balance is $555 once another month, one way or another, really going to matter in the grand scheme of things, but it could actually save a life in the long run with the sweltering heat.
It could. What we look at is, remember, we don't disconnect under our policy on excessive heat days, and really, that's kind of the gauge, that we just don't experience a lot of those during the month of September. And really, we're up to September 30th, so it's quite a, you know, far into the fall. We could, but as you see, the challenge we're going to have already, and, and you say, yeah, they could just accumulate more, but that, what that probably does is put somebody in a, a much difficult position to pay this off in a short period of time. So, that's the trade-off, right? You, you can avoid the payment during the summer, but now, you get, whether it's September 30th or October, you have to pay this off, or you're, you're going to get disconnected. And I think that's the fear that the utilities had, is that some people are not going to be motivated, and so they may find, they spend the money on other things, and now you've got these balances that may be nearly impossible to pay off. And so, it was an interesting exercise during this year, but I think most of them are going to go back just to, and adjust their policies and be more sensitive about excessive heat days, moving, and you're going to see what we're proposing, too, to kind of manage that so we don't allow these weeks and months to go by without some kind of payment, because these are big numbers for some of our customers.
Yeah, this can be, just the June through September, that can be four months of bills that somehow they have to try and find a way to catch up on. We're very sensitive to that, too.
And we do have some customers that have started services with us, maybe in March or April, and they have not paid anything on their account since they've started services because we put this out there and we didn't turn them off.
So, this will be, we'll, we'll continue to watch what's going on with the other agencies, and we will continue to learn and figure out where we go next year. Some more program enhancements, we are increasing the disconnect threshold from $50 to $150. This was never intended to be part of a payment plan or a relief or anything, but we don't want to be turning somebody off for a dollar, or, you know, even looking at where people are today, we don't want to turn them off for $52. We want to turn them off when they have an appropriate balance. So, we're going to increase that threshold to 150. We are going to continue our program of not doing disconnects except for gas on excessive heat warning days, as issued by the National Weather Service. We've been doing this for, I'm going to guess, between seven and 10 years now. So, we will continue that. And then, we are increasing the Mesa Utility Assistance Program funding from $100,000 to $125,000. We're adding that $25,000 in there.
That was your question, Mayor.
Which should. Which should get us considerable improvement on the tail end of the fiscal year.
And allows New Leaf and the others to be, make sure we cover the full year of those who are eligible. I think we're kind of bumping up against $100,000, so we felt like we needed to increase that slightly. And the goal here really is if anybody who's eligible under the criteria that established by our nonprofits, and they meet that criteria, that we will have funding to cover their cost. That's the goal.
So just to talk about that number for a little bit, it sounds like last year we ran out of funding about?
Well, we went over, we were like $400 over, so we were right up against it.
Okay.
But because we're on a little bit more of, so Eva kind of told me, hey, we could, we could, just, we're kind of cutting it short here. So we said, let's look at, we would propose coming up, we'd add another $25,000 to that $100,000 to make sure we don't, again, I, we set a budget, but our goal is not to let anybody who's eligible under this program, I mean, we want to make it sure it's available. So we, we're going to just adjust that budget slightly. We think that'll cover us for the next year.
So that was my question, is if $100,000 got us 11 out of 12 months, you would think adding another 25 would be more than sufficient?
That's our goal. That's the thinking.
All right.
Two more items that will be coming up to the council here shortly. The first one will come with the rate conversations. We have a proposal in the works to reduce the water service charge by 30% or about $100 per year for lower-income seniors. We're excited about that. And then we have a presentation coming to council in October about the implementation of the advanced meter infrastructure, which includes smart meters. So what can we learn with the data that we're collecting as a city? But then also, what can the customer do with that data to make adjustments in their life to affect their utility usage? And again, that will be coming late October.
Mayor, Council, what we're kind of, I guess, previewing a little bit with you to kind of make sure we're heading in the right direction, is not only increasing the threshold where we will cut off, we would cut off someone or disconnect someone's utilities from 50 to $150, adding additional dollars for nonprofit partners to work with us on the voucher program to make sure we cover everybody who's eligible. But also on the front end, what we're proposing, we're going to be proposing to council as we bring rates to you, is a decrease, and we call it the water service charge, so it's the flat fee, right? It assumes a certain amount of minimum usage for every customer, but it's a flat rate. And what we're going to suggest for qualified, eligible, low-income seniors, that we would just reduce that by 30%. That comes out to about $100 a year. We think that a little bit will help, certainly during the year. We think that's a group that we want to make sure we're looking after or making sure we're addressing. So that's the, that is something we would be proposing to council to consider when we do the rates. And then as, in a previous, well, and just, and Councilmember Ereti and Councilmember Thompson, we're in the previous committee meeting, we talked about how important it is as consumers become aware of their consumption and what, what the effect of leaving the lights on or adjusting your AC by a certain degree or two, what a difference that can make in your billing. And we really are interested and continue to roll out these advanced meters because that will, we believe, will help all our customers, but certainly those who struggle with their payments, to give them more information and be able to manage their consumption better. We think that will be a really helpful tool for a lot of our customers.
Thank you. So I know there has been a lot of discussion in the last couple of months particularly about what can we do to further assist low-income utility rate payers in the city. And so I appreciate, this is the city's response. I mean, the, upping the utility assistance program directly to take care of those folks who are at risk of being turned off. I think the senior discount program that we talked about, it comes out to roughly about $100 a year for those qualifying seniors that want to take advantage of that program, which is significant. And then it will be interesting to see how the smart meters, the additional information that comes from that, how that's helpful. So these, again, I appreciate staff being responsive to the concerns that we've been hearing in the community about what can we do to, to help those who need help with utilities. So thank you very much. Mr. Luna?
Just really quick, Ed, I don't know, Eva, if we work with the adult, East Valley Adult Resources to let them know about this future
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah, once the council, once we get through the rate process and you give us a green light on that, we would, that's, I think we can do a better job on all these public utility assistance programs, but that's certainly because that'll be a new one, that'll be a great group to reach out to.
Okay, great.
We do partner with them.
Okay.
Oh, awesome. Good.
Well, speaking of that, I know we've talked about partners, I want to make sure that on the, thank you to a new leaf for what you do to help with the utility assistance program, but also other agencies that do similar work are Lutheran Social Services, the Salvation Army, Mesa Can, and a new leaf. All four of those agencies have the ability to work with us on that program. Is that, did I get it wrong?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, a new leaf and Mesa Can are synonymous.
Okay.
We can give these double credit, that way.
Thank you. Yes and yes.
Okay.
So Mesa Can is a program of a new leaf.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Council, any other questions? Okay, thank you for the good work you do in our community. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item three, that's to acknowledge receipt of minutes of boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item four on our agenda is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, I know you've been busy.
You want to start us off?
Okay, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, colleagues. Yeah, I, there's a lot been happening. And Mayor, you mentioned last week, we went to the Mesa Historical Museum and we had, we were there as, there with you as well. And it was a great exhibit there and a lot of people attended. Also, last Thursday, I was able to attend the Abrazo Hospital ribbon cutting, and that, they're creating a neighborhood hospital, and it was very unique. It's about a 50-bed facility right on baseline there, 5,700 block of East Baseline. They're bringing 50 new jobs to the community. So they're, they're going to be able to expand in the future. They have some additional acreage there. And they're going to work with partnerships with the other, like some of the colleges there in the area. But that was a great time there. As well as, I think, we received an award Saturday night, and I think Christine Zalanka should be here with her pom-poms, just cheerleading this on. But she, I think she chooses to sit on the back row. But Arizona Forward, every year, the city turns in applications for some of the awards. And one of them was this award here, our staff, Scott Boucher, and would you please stand in your staff? I mean, the household, we want to recognize you for all the hard work you've done.
Yeah.
Come on, there's more. Give credit. This is a very prestigious award, and I was flanked by Councilmember Duff, Councilmember Luna, and as well as Councilmember Thompson and other staff. It was a great time. I mean, this is, this is a real heavy plaque. I don't know, Mayor, who gets this? Whose office?
Good question.
Probably yours.
Probably yours. No, not mine.
But I just want to read here, the City of Mesa has won this Crescortia Award Excellence for our household hazardous waste facility. You know, we began holding these HHW events in the early 90s, and I remember deciding which one I'm going to, whether it's the East Service Center or the one in the Lehigh area. And either one was packed. I mean, the last one, it was over a mile long of people backed up trying to dispose of their household hazardous waste material. So by opening this facility, it's a year-round facility, Wednesday through Saturday, from 7:00 AM to noon. It allows our residents to dispose of items. And so far, I believe, 120,000 people have used it so far. Scott, am I kind of correct on that? Laura? Regardless, a lot of people have.
We're going to go with that.
Not a lot of people.
I think it was a million.
But, but a lot of people are using it today, and it's very convenient hours, all for the same cost. We've collected over 287,000 pounds of household hazardous waste. And part of that's deferred not to the landfill. I think about 60,000 pounds does not go to the landfill. But regardless, it's a job well done by our staff, and of course, the elected officials get a little bit of accolades. But the real accolades go to the people who worked so hard for our city, and I appreciate our city staff for doing that. So a round of applause for everybody again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, Councilmember Thompson and you, Mayor, we attended the naturalization ceremony over at Skyline High School, and I think there were over 100 people that received their naturalization.
36 different countries.
36 different countries. So it was a great event. On Friday, I attended the Datos, which is the state of Arizona Hispanic Market, and it was the state of, actually, the health of Arizona Latinos. It was very interesting. And Saturday, I want to thank Brian Solar and Don Blake. They hosted a meeting over at All Saints Catholic Church. People are interested in public safety and the safety of their congregation. And I have to commend our police staff. They do a wonderful job, so. Want to thank again Brian Solar as well as Don Blake for that.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
And if Amy Gentry could stand up. Amy is shadowing me today. She's with the Mesa Leadership Development Program, also a constituent, so she's my boss. So Amy, thank you for hanging out with me today and hopefully you've had fun.
Thank you, Colonel. Thanks for letting me pass your round.
Council, Jen?
Of course, I always have a list. Last Friday, as I mentioned, is, was Parking Day. We had a display, you might have seen something on the news, that Phoenix had their Parking Day, in which you take parking spaces, make a parklet out of it. We had, with the assistance of our Bike Ped and our Transportation Department, a couple of bike racks, we had 20 bikes all lined up in one parking space to show how we can use parking spaces differently. We can have 20 people on bikes and only use one space. And we also had a park area for the community to talk about the design of our cities and making them more bikeable, walkable, and community-oriented. Combined on that same day, that evening, there was a climate strike here, and Sean Huntington of Keep Nature Wild and Mazona Market hosted it, and we had yummy cookies, and we made signs about protecting our environment. Walked over to in front of council chambers here, and we met up with some other people who are waiting, and we just networked with each other, we did some chants, we learned like that about, you know, what we're doing. And it was really a positive thing on working together to make the impact that we need to change the course of what's going on with our environment. On Saturday, I attended the Mesa Book Festival podcast, and we had a little competition going on as well as, I did, of course. No, so Councilmember Luna and Heredia also did their hour of the podcast, the Facebook Live. And we talked about the importance of reading, interviewed some authors, and we did a little fundraising for the Mesa Book Festival, which is December 14th. And we had a competition between each other who could raise more money online. And so I think I beat you guys by like a whole $10 or something, but anyway, I beat you. But that was a lot of fun. So look forward to that. And then Sunday, I was with the mayor yesterday at Mount Calvary Baptist Church, in which we were celebrating the 101st anniversary of the church. So we thank that church, Mount Calvary, for being part of the community and the work they do, as well as Pastor Wade, which is very integral in interfacing and working with our community. So that was really an energizing worship service. Always enjoy it.
Thank you. You guys have covered everything I was going to say, so thank you very much. We are going to take a photo with, with staff, and oh, you know, we mentioned Scott Boucher, but I was told to make sure that we say Laura Heinemann's name, too, Laura, because Scott's always taking all the credit for stuff, so. Scott would be the first one to make sure we said, we mentioned Laura's role. And the Household Hazardous Materials Facility really has been a huge success, so that, this award, as beautiful as it is, I mean, this is well-deserved. So thank you to staff.
I hope you add something on that.
Yes.
You know, the recycling and everything, but they have a great reuse program, so when you're taking that bug killer or lawn care stuff or all these things, they store them on shelves there. So when you need, instead of running to Home Depot for a tablespoon of this or that dress, you can reuse it, return it. It's free at will, and I think that's a great resource instead of always having to buy and then it sits on your shelf forever. That way it can be a community resource.
Absolutely. If you have a Coleman stove, don't, please go get some propane for free from this facility. Or the last time I was there, I took a brand-new bottle of car wax and went over and waxed my car. So you really do need to check this out. It's a great place.
Yeah.
We are going to take a photo with this beautiful award, but we're going to do that right after we conclude this meeting. So Mr. Brady, what's our schedule?